Alright folks, let's get started. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 12 o'clock straight up, so we're gonna get rolling. On behalf of the Mammoth Lakes Chamber of Commerce, I am Rich Sanfilippo. I'm currently the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of all of our board members, Ken Brangle, Brianna, and Curtis, our executive and chamber staff, we welcome you to this forum where we're going to have the opportunity to ask some questions of the four folks that are running for town council. So we're very excited to have them here with us today. I'm gonna introduce them in a quick second. Basically, the way that we're gonna go through this this afternoon is each candidate will have an opportunity to do a one-minute opening statement of sorts and kind of reintroduce themselves to us. Following that, we will be asking six questions that the candidates received earlier and they're listed in the chat room for all of you to see as well. And we will be asking each of those questions to each candidate. They'll have 90 seconds to answer said question. Brianna will be doing timekeeping for us. So if you're watching along, you may happen to see Brianna with some different ways of letting our candidates know that they're reaching the end of their 90 seconds to answer the questions. Following all six questions being asked and answered, each candidate will have a 90-second rebuttal period in which they can refer back to any of the other candidates that they're running along with to clarify something maybe that they heard or questions they might have specifically for a fellow candidate. Or they can use that time certainly to kind of wrap up, you know, their speaking with us today. Ken will then take us through question and answers. And so, folks, if you come up with any questions, we would ask that you put those into the chatroom, but that they be addressed specifically to a candidate versus making it a general question. That way, we can, Ken will vet those questions and then specifically ask each candidate any of those questions that wind up in the chatroom. And the candidates will have a minute to answer those. And if we get to the end and everybody is still willing and engaged, we'll spend any remaining time allowing equally the candidates to do any wrap-up that they might like to have. So with that, thank you again for joining us today for our Power Lunch. And I want to first introduce to each of you Cindy Myrld, Sarah Rae, Bill Souzer, and Heidi Steenstra. All four of these esteemed folks are running for town council here in Mammoth Lakes. And I know that I speak on behalf of all of us that we appreciate very much the four of you. Bill, obviously, you're the incumbent and our current mayor. So thank you for all the hard work you're already doing for us. But to each of you individually, thank you. I know that we all mean that sincerely. It's a daunting task to take this on and put your name out there and be willing to do this. So thank you, one and all, for doing that. We'll start with intros then, based on that. I'm gonna do these in alphabetical order. So Cindy, you're first up and you've got a minute to say hello to us and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Cindy. I've been in town for a little over 20 years. We've raised our four daughters here. And my husband's name is actually Larry, not Frank, as was stated in the sheet this last week. I'm running for council because I really wanna stay involved. I've worked for the town for over 20 years in the finance department. And I still wanna be a part of things when I stop working.
Alright, I'm a little slow on the unmute. I'll get better at that as we go. Thank you, Cindy. Next up, Sarah Rae, welcome. And how's everything going with you this afternoon?
I'm doing well. Thank you so much for having all of us today. I know it's a lot of kitten herding, so we sure do appreciate getting everyone together. So I'm Sarah Rae. I've lived in Mammoth since 2011. I moved here from Yosemite National Park, where I spent about eight years working as a server at the Yawani Hotel and I was a cook in the High Sierra camps. And I kind of, I moved to Mammoth to live in the big city. It was about as big city as I could handle. So yeah, I found my way here and super thankful I did. I went to high school in Sonora, California, which is just on the western side of the Sierra. And I studied print journalism at USC in Los Angeles. So definitely a California person, but I've traveled a lot. Well, I've lived in a lot of mountain towns and this place really has my heart. Since I've lived here, I've worked as a server at a lot of restaurants, Skadi, Petras, Blue, the Weston, and probably a few I'm forgetting. And I also covered town council when I worked for the sheet. I covered town council for about three years. And I've also served, I've also served for the Irish, which is a domestic crisis counseling center for four years almost since 2016. And I currently serve as the assistant to Tom Parker, who's the CEO at Mammoth Hospital. And I'm also the secretary to the Board of Directors of Mammoth Hospital. And I'm running for town council because I just really have a deep love for this community and it's given so much to me and I welcome the opportunity to give something back now.
Awesome. Thanks, Sarah. And that noise everyone heard was Brianna doing a great job in the timing, Sarah. I let you finish up there for a couple of seconds.
Okay, oh, thank you.
I don't wanna go Chris Wallace on anybody right away. So next up is Bill Souzer. Bill, take a minute and say hello to everybody.
Good afternoon, everybody. I think most of you know me already. So I'm gonna keep my statement brief. I'm fighting a chest infection. So I'm gonna be talking with a cough drop in my mouth and hopefully I won't cough on you all. I am running for council because I don't think my job yet is done. I've lived in Mammoth a long time. I would like to continue to serve you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Bill. And I was gonna let everybody know, yeah, Bill called us all this morning and he's fighting a pretty good chest cold and asked for your forgiveness if he has a bit of a coughing fit and has to mute himself out. But Bill, thank you for powering through and we're sure you're gonna do great, as always. Last, but not least, Heidi, give us a minute on yourself and how you're doing this afternoon.
Sorry, it's the unmute-mute issue also. So I moved here in 1999 with my husband. We moved here in a motorhome. I knew moving to another ski town was gonna be challenging for housing. I've worked various jobs in resort communities throughout my life here and before coming here. My longest and current job is an onsite condo manager, which encompasses multiple daily challenges. I work with my board, I work with my homeowners and guests coming and going. I also assist on the budget, attend every meeting, and kind of try to give guidance to my board as to current projects and upcoming projects and working to represent my homeowners the best that I can, you know, with projects to our vendors. I'm also employed part-time at a sporting goods store in town. I have worked there for about 16 years and worked my way up. I am now the women's clothing buyer. And yeah.
Heidi, you want a quick second? Anything else you wanna finish up with there?
So again, that requires me to work within a budget, communicate with people, running for council to represent the young families who are trying to make it a go in this town and wanting to raise their families and continuing to move forward and work on housing.
Great. Thank you, Heidi. And again, thank you to the four of you. Okay, so we're gonna move to question number one. And we're gonna go, actually, just for this one, we'll be in reverse order. So Heidi, you're gonna be right back up with us. The candidates asked that I would ask the question at the start of each candidate's answer again. So you're gonna hear me repeat the question four times. But that was at their request. And again, candidates, you'll have 90 seconds to answer these questions. And please do your best to try to pay attention to Brianna and the timekeeping so we can get everyone through this. So with that, Heidi, you're up. Question number one. What role do you see the town council playing in assisting the business community to grow a stable economic base?
I believe it starts with housing. Without adequate housing, there is no growth for businesses because there are no employees to work those businesses. Housing, not just for our long-term to own or long-term folks to own, but for our seasonal workers also. Also, the economic relief provided by the current council is great. Council needs to continue with the flexibility that has been shown to businesses during the pandemic, easing up on tent restrictions, signage, and parking rules.
Alright, fantastic. Thank you, Heidi. Bill, you're gonna be up next. Sarah, you'll be on deck. And Cindy, you'll be last on this question. Bill, same question to you. What role do you see the town council playing in assisting the business community to grow a stable economic base?
Thank you, sir. Being a longtime local and having worked for and owned several businesses in Mammoth, I think makes me uniquely qualified to work with the business community in helping us to continue to grow a stable economy. Housing. The town has become very involved in the housing needs of our community. One of the biggest problems I'm hearing from the business community is the lack of workforce housing. The town council has aggressively allocated funding to this need. And the hope is that shortly, we will see some of the fruits of that labor. That being said, the local businesses in the town council need to work more collaboratively than they have in the past to define what best serves the town of Mammoth Lakes. This includes directions, policies, and ordinances or town rules that will allow businesses to take advantage of the ever-changing business landscape. We need to continue to look at ways to keep us moving forward, continue to look at what our fees for new development are. We have lowered them. Update signage and parking regulations, continue diversification of our tourism-based economy, events, expanding summer recreation, off-road, mountain biking, new and improved trails, trails, and host programs, and on and on.
Thank you, Bill. And I'm assuming that everybody's seeing the same thing. And Bill, just potentially, you had your video off on purpose, but I wanted to let you know your video was off. Okay, Sarah?
I will be turning it off and on as we go. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Sarah, same question to you. Again, what role do you see the town council playing in assisting the business community to grow a stable economic base?
Yeah, thank you. This is a great question. To me, growing a stable economic base means more than just investing in tourism. It means investing in each other. I grew up, my mom ran her own business, so I grew up sweeping the floors in her shop after school. And I know exactly what it means for a family to have a good month and I know what it feels like to have a bad month. The town council's role is to set policy and to implement strategic priorities and to answer the public. So regarding strategic priorities, those include expanding community housing, implementing municipal services, enhancing our recreation-based economy, and investing in improvements in capital infrastructure. So these priorities serve the purpose of making Mammoth Lakes a great place to live and work, which in turn supports the business community. So affordable housing, as Heidi said, I 100% agree. That allows businesses to hire stable employees who won't leave town when they can't find a place to live. It also provides local residents with disposable income because they aren't shelling out over 50% of their take-home pay on rent. If this pandemic has taught us anything, it's that while tourism is our bread and butter, we need to take care of our residents. Those few restaurants that managed to keep their doors open during the first month of lockdown, they were supported by residents. And we need to make sure that they are able to keep their heads above water by making this not only a great place to live and work, but an affordable place to live and work. So by implementing enhanced municipal services and investing in infrastructure, we're continuously making Mammoth a better place to live, a place where people want to raise their children and a place where people want to...
Great, great timing there as well, Sarah. Thank you. Cindy, finally, on question number one again. What role do you see the town council playing in assisting the business community to grow a stable economic base?
I agree with pretty much what everybody else had said as well, you know. Council has to set the strategic priorities and set the plans in place for what it is that the town manager and town staff are gonna be working on. And of course, you know, we need a stable housing environment so that we can, our businesses can hire employees. I'm super pleased that we've been able to provide the grant opportunities to help certain businesses or many of the businesses through the COVID crisis. I'd like to see some grant opportunities, if budget allows, moving into the future of maybe helping improve the facade, the outside entrance to our businesses and what our businesses look like to our visitors and locals. So we can be proud of where we live.
Great. Thank you. Alright, we made it through question number one. Fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Question number two. Bill, you're gonna be up first on this one, followed by Heidi. Cindy, you'll be in the third spot. And Sarah, you'll bring us home on question number two. So Bill, how would you involve, communicate, and receive feedback from businesses on decisions that would impact them?
Thank you again, Rich. I believe the best relationships are in-person, one-on-one type relationships. I try my best to talk to a wide variety of business owners on a regular basis to find out what their thoughts are on things coming before the town council that may or may not affect them. I am somewhat concerned by the fact that not more business people contact me and the other council members when they have an issue. Easier to deal with an issue before it becomes a real problem for council. So I would encourage that communication. I would love to see a reinvigorate, I would love to see a reinvigorated restaurant, retail organizations who can come through with collective thoughts on their businesses. I would like to see us retain some of the things we have done since COVID started, such as the Friday morning business roundtables, the roundtables that the chamber has stepped up and done a very good job on, great source of information for council members. So I would like to see us retain some of these COVID projects in the future as well. But for me, it comes down to talking in person. Call me, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Heidi, you're up next. Question number two again. How would you involve, communicate, and receive feedback from businesses on decisions that would impact them? Heidi, you need to unmute.
Sorry. So I love that chambers continuing with the hosted coffees and power lunches that members can tune into and attend, continue providing updated informations to businesses in a timely manner. I agree with Bill. Checking in with businesses, going to them. I would make a commitment to try to visit business owners, you know, two or three quarterly to do a face-to-face check-in. Business owners are busy working their business right now. Between the early-season pandemic shutdown, now wildfires, and they've always been short-staffed due to their staff, you know, a shortage of housing. What about a personal email, you know, just really checking in as things are getting closer regarding upcoming decisions that the town is considering? Does the Chamber of Commerce have a Spanish-speaking liaison? Chamber of Commerce is under Mammoth Lakes Tourism. Councils should give direction to the town manager to have MLT work with the chamber to provide an update to council with current questions and concerns from business owners. Do all businesses really need to be a member of the chamber to voice their concerns? They don't think so. Is that too intimidating to businesses if they are not a member to approach council? Making them feel more comfortable to approach council and chamber.
Great. Thank you, Heidi. Question number two now to you, Cindy. Cindy, how would you involve, communicate, and receive feedback from businesses on decisions that would impact them?
I would participate in roundtable discussions. I do think the chamber is doing a good job and I think they're a conduit to the business community and provides a lot of information and resources. I would encourage every business to be a member. It's, this year, it's free. So I think everybody could benefit from that activity. Like Bill and the others have said, I would wanna be available for one-on-one conversations and discuss or talk about the things that are affecting each of the businesses and that they really want us to work on.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. Sarah, finally, to you now for question number two. How would you involve, communicate, and receive feedback from businesses on decisions that would impact them?
So inclusive, interactive government is one of the cornerstones of my campaign. I will strive to be accessible as an elected official. As I've said throughout my campaign, please email me, send me a Facebook or Instagram message. I'm @boutsarahay on all the things. Shoot me a text. We can set up a time to talk on the phone. I do have a full-time job and I have a private life, of course, but I am running for town council to serve and I'm running for town council to answer to you. So I will also strive to bring the town of Mammoth Lakes government along with me to meet people where they are on social media. I'd like our council meetings to be streamed on Facebook Live. I'd like all of our events to be shared on all of the town's social media platforms. I really want all of our communication to be translated into Spanish. Democracy is participatory. So how are you gonna make it to the public comment when it's at the exact same time as the tables are filling up at your restaurant? Do you have time to read the council packet when you're scrambling to get your payroll done? I wanna ask you, the business community, you know, what works for you? How can we meet you where you are and how can we make sure that your voices are heard? So again, @boutsarahay, R-E-A, please shoot me a message with anything that, you know, you wanna discuss. And that's my first step, is to always be accessible and bring the town government along with me.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Candidates, just like that, you're a third of the way through the questions already. Congratulations. We're on to question number three now. The order for answering this one will be, Sarah, you'll be up first. this one will be Sarah, you'll be up first, followed by Cindy, Heidi, and Bill, you'll be bringing us home on this one. So to Sarah, question number three. Mammoth Lakes is a tourism-based economy. What role does the town council have in assisting Mammoth Lakes Tourism or MLT to be successful?
So I believe that town support of MLT is most certainly sufficient. MLT is given 9.5% of the town's budget, as well as TBIT proceeds, and I know that MLT is a little bit easy for people to hate on right now, especially after this crazy summer, but we need to remember that they are fulfilling the mission that we tasked them with, which is to bring tourism to town. They are doing their jobs. We can't punish them for that, and I don't think we need to discuss what to do to make MLT successful. They clearly are successful. What I'd like to explore is how do we balance quality of life in our community with economic stability? I want to give a plug right now to the Eastern Sierra Sustainable Recreation Partnership, which is a grant-funded, multi-year effort to identify sustainable rec opportunities in Eastern Sierra. It's a collaborative of Mammoth, Bishop, Inyoamono Counties, and Alpine County, and they are looking for project ideas right now. So when we see this crazy kind of summer and we think, oh man, I really have like a thought about what I'd like to do to make things better, you can submit project ideas to them right now. Do you want to see employees paid a living wage to educate our visitors about fire danger and responsible trail use? Do you want to see more public dumpsters? What would improve the quality of life for you and your family? We have the opportunity right now to be the change we want to see, so let's stop asking ourselves how to be successful in bringing tourists to town. I think we have a good system for that. Let's ask ourselves how to be successful in creating the kind of community we want to live in.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Cindy, you're up next with question number three, which once again is, Mammoth Lakes is a tourism-based economy. What role does the town council have in assisting Mammoth Lakes Tourism to be successful?
First of all, I'd say define "successful" because I think that MLT has done a tremendous job at marketing and bringing people here, as our TOT revenues clearly shows over the past several years. The town provides funding to MLT and is getting better at participating in the budgeting processes, requiring a certain set of deliverables, not only from MLT, but also from the other NGOs. In recent years, the town council has set the budget for the NGOs with the expectation that the NGOs will live within that budget and provide specific, a specific set of deliverables. When there are excess funds, the town holds those funds in a reserve for further discussion on how those funds will be spent within the scope of their designated purposes.
Great, thanks, Cindy. Heidi, you're up next with question number three, which once again is, Mammoth Lakes is a tourism-based economy. What role does the town council have in assisting Mammoth Lakes Tourism to be successful?
Again, Mammoth Lakes Tourism is in the market, is in, is to market the town and all its amenities. I think we've done a great job at marketing Mammoth, maybe too well, some would say. Town Council is not in marketing, but it is to monitor and allocate funds to MLT. TBIT and a portion of the TOT are sent to MLT. Should it be revisited to look at if MLT really needs all the funds they are given? Also, to require transparency in how funds are spent, to get a clearer picture of this NGO. The community is very skeptical of Mammoth Tourism. Where does all that money go?
All right, thank you, Heidi. And finally, Bill, with question number three. Bill, Mammoth Lakes is a tourism-based economy. What role does the town council have in assisting Mammoth Lakes Tourism to be successful?
Thank you again, Rich. Mammoth Lakes Tourism is a marketing arm of the town, have been very successful. We have seen that in the past. Mammoth Lakes Tourism is a nonprofit, often referred to as an NGO that was created by the Town of Mammoth Lakes to do its tourism research and marketing for it. So perhaps as good a question as what the council can do to assist MLT would be to ask what MLT can do to help the town succeed as a resort-based community. With the successes we have, we have to look at, should marketing be its sole function? Or are there other purposes out there through them that the money could be spent to achieve the goals of a stable economy? We've already started down that path. They have put money into the host program. They have put money into the signage and wayfinding program, all very appropriate. I believe the funds that go to MLT are completely appropriate. Do not want to see them taken from them, but we need to ask the question, can we better use some of those funds through them to provide more than just marketing alone? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, question number four. The order for answering this one will be Cindy, you'll be up first, followed by Sarah. Bill, you'll be in the third spot, and Heidi, you'll be bringing this question home for us. So to you, Cindy, question number four. The Town of Mammoth Lakes, over the last five fiscal years, has received approximately $25 million in excess TOT dollars over the budgeted amounts. What do you believe the excess TOT dollars should be spent on?
Well, that $25 million has already been spent or allocated, so going forward, should we have the excess, excess TOT dollars or revenues, I would say we need to increase our reserves. The town has been able to weather the COVID-19 quite well because of our conservative budgeting practices. There's always going to be highs and lows in the economy, and we need to have reserves available in order to respond without having to cut our core services. Restructuring and paying down long-term debt, such as the unfunded liability, we are paying 7% interest on over $20 million in debt. This year's required payment for CalPERS unfunded liabilities was just under $1.9 million. With the current interest rates, I think that we have an opportunity to address this issue and save the town dollars over time. I think we need to increase road maintenance and capital projects, such as paving, repairing our potholes, taking care of the community, and complete or enhance other existing town facilities.
Excellent, thank you, Cindy. Next up, Sarah, question number four. The Town of Mammoth Lakes, over the last, sorry, over the last, yeah, over the last five fiscal years, has received approximately $25 million in excess TOT over the budgeted amounts. What do you believe the excess TOT dollars should be spent on?
So for those of you who know me, you know I'm pretty socially liberal, but I'm very fiscally conservative. Transient occupancy tax funds are essential services, and I do not think the excess should be spent at this time, especially when we're unsure what our capacity to collect TOT will be in the next couple of years with the global pandemic slowing tourism down across the world. I really don't think we should be thinking of that $25 million as excess when we are paying over 10% of our town's $21 million budget to the airport debt. I think bulking up our reserve for economic uncertainty would be a very smart use of the money, and of course, I highly disapprove of using any more town staff time and spending any more of our visitors' and residents' money on developing a multi-use facility at this time. I am all for exploring a world-class, Olympic-sized hockey rink when we are no longer battling a global pandemic, but now is not the time. Right now, we need to spruce up our current ice rink, pay the lease on our school district's land, and let our kids skate.
Great, thank you. Bill, you're up next for question number four, which again is, the Town of Mammoth Lakes, over the last five fiscal years, has received approximately $25 million in excess TOT over the budgeted amounts. What do you believe the excess TOT dollars should be spent on?
Again, thank you. One of the things, as a council member for the last four years, that I'm the most proud of, is how the budget has evolved and how we've continued to conservatively forecast our income streams. To call us just excess TOT dollars might be a bit mistaken. If and when we have excess at the end of the year, it gives us opportunities to fund things that have been planned in our CIP or what else. For the first time in the town's history, a couple of years back, and that's really important, the first time in this town's history, we managed to take a large chunk of money to the maintenance of the town's own infrastructure. We rehabbed the community center. We rebuilt the food shack at Shady Rest, made improvements to trails and parks, all because of how we have currently budgeted. We also managed to come up with the money to buy the Shady Rest parcel, now referred to as the parcel. Just as, or maybe even more important, because of our conservative budgeting, we have managed to this point to survive the COVID pandemic without having to dig into our main reserves, those being the reserves for economic uncertainty and the operating reserves. We even managed to find money in the budget to fund two projects, excuse me, the Rental Assistance Program and the Small Business Assistance Program to help our community weather this storm. We also have to keep in mind things like our unfunded liabilities, which would be mainly the pension fund. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Heidi, finally, you'll take us home on question number four, which again is, the Town of Mammoth Lakes, over the last five fiscal years, has received approximately $25, I'm sorry, $25 million in excess TOT dollars over the budgeted amounts. What do you believe the excess TOT dollars should be spent on?
So again, it's going to go back to housing, get it moving, put as much as we can towards it. Also, to continue to build up our reserves, making sure we can weather through another or an extended pandemic issue or another heavy fire season. Right now, we've had a shutdown in early spring and summer, and then over our late summer, early fall this year. There are typically slower times for a TOT influx, but what if we have a winter holiday shutdown or a July shutdown? How long are we able to maintain at the current pace we've been going at? The Renter Assistance Program business, current requirements for all town employees, and Police 24/7, those are just our core services. Also, we need to look at paying off our debt. We need to work on our parking issues, to work on alleviating that, work on town transit, to get our people out of their cars, and to also continue working on our facilities and amenities. Does the town currently have a does the town have a current allocation process for excess revenue to other accounts? If I've read correctly, some of the funds are held and restricted by policy. How does that affect the excess money when those funds can only be used for certain aspects of projects?
All right, thank you, Heidi, and I apologize, everybody. That's my phone at the house here ringing in the background, so apologies with that. Okay, so we're moving on to question number five. The order for answering this one, Heidi, you'll be right back up again, followed by Bill. Sarah, you'll be in the third spot, and Cindy, you will take us home on question number five, which is, now then for Heidi. Since 2016, a number of studies have been completed, such as walk-bike, ride downtown revitalization plan, Housing Action Plan, Live, Work, Thrive, Plan the Parcel. What role does town council have in the completion of these plans?
Struggling with that button. Town council needs to continue to support each group that heads up these areas, but also require accountability from them. When council is presented with a study, they need to move forward with it. With the multiple studies being done, why was there no action? Then a few years later, another study on the same issue with roughly the same answer. Put the consultant money towards the project. Prices are not going to go down for any of these projects we look into and start rolling. We need to move forward and show action.
Great, thank you, Heidi. Bill, you're up next with question number five, which again is, since 2016, a number of studies have been completed, such as walk-bike, ride, downtown revitalization plan, Housing Action Plan, Live, Work, Thrive, and Plan the Parcel. What role does town council have in the completion of these plans?
Thank you again, Rich. For the most part, these plans are accepted plans, not adopted plans. That means they are informing, not prescriptive. They are to inform on future projects. When it comes to their content, no environment analysis has been done, so they're not shovel-ready projects. However, they're meant to inform as to other projects that come forward. As the walk-bike-ride plan has elements of circulation and transit in other directions, that we try to apply to other plans, such as the plan for the parcel. So how these plans get implemented is that we see to it that the elements that they contain end up in the construction documents or in the plans for projects that actually move forward. Then the sequela is done on them, and then they become actual projects. There are several things that have been done out of them already, the parcel planning, animation on Main Street, the snowflake beautification plans for Old Mammoth Road. So there are several elements of all of these plans that are moving forward, just as they should. As projects come forward, they are added into those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Cindy, you'll be taking us home here now on question number five, which once again is, since 2016, a number of studies have been completed, such as walk-bike, ride, downtown revitalization plan, Housing Action Plan, Live, Work, Thrive, and Plan the Parcel. What role does the town council have in the completion of these plans?
Town council is responsible for setting the priorities for what the work plan is going to be and how the budget is going to be developed based on that work plan. Setting priorities helps town manager and staff to create their work programs. And like Bill said, the plans are all accepted plans in the town and plans that provide town council a roadmap in order to provide future policy decisions, as well as budget decisions on any of these projects moving forward.
Great, thank you. And I think probably everybody caught that I skipped over Sarah on this one, and I apologize with that, Sarah. Apparently, I can't read my own scribbles. So Sarah, you'll be finally answering this question for us. Sarah, this is question number five, and the question is, since 2016, a number of studies have been completed, such as walk-bike, ride, downtown revitalization plan, Housing Action Plan, Live, Work, Thrive, and Plan the Parcel. What role does town council have in the completion of these plans?
Yeah, so I've got to be honest, I'm kind of overpaying consultants to tell us what we already know. We need affordable housing. We want to live in a walkable community, and we want to be able to tell our visitors where the downtown is. So in my opinion, build affordable housing at the parcel, and the rest will follow. Our business owners and our residents are already making this happen on their own, with or without the council's direction, and with or without consultants' reports. Look at the amazing new restaurants that have sprung up within walking distance to the parcel. The Warming Hut, Gojira, Dish Bistro, we have Latin Market, we have an axe-throwing spot, but right now, the literal center of our town is known as the diaper forest. I can't even walk my dog through there because there's chicken bones everywhere. So once we get families living there with kids riding their bikes, and moms able to go down to the corner store and get a gallon of milk from a locally-owned shop, that heartbeat takes off on its own. We don't need a plan to tell us that. Build the housing, and the vision will be realized.
Great, thank you, Sarah. And again, apologies for messing up the order on that one. All right, candidates, we are at our final question, number six. The order here, if I can manage to maintain order, will be Sarah, starting us off, Cindy, Heidi in the third spot, and Bill, you'll take us home on question number six, which then for Sarah is, over the next five years, what infrastructure projects should the town focus on?
So again, it's always going to come back to developing the parcel for me. If I'm elected to town council, it will be my honor to fight for this housing development throughout my tenure, and to see the heart of Mammoth Lakes turned into a thriving hub of residents and families who support their locally-owned businesses all year round, full stop. But since you asked, other projects that are important to me are sidewalks, multi-use paths, and parks. Who here attended the reopening of the inclusive playground at Shady Rest? That was one of the most heartwarming things I've ever seen, to watch our town's kids playing together, our community having come together for this amazing shared goal. This was a project everyone could get behind, a project that made us feel like we all had a stake in it. We did it ourselves. It didn't pit neighbor against neighbor. We have been letting the great get in the way of the good for a long time in Mammoth. Yes, we are a world-class destination. Yes, it's the mountains and the rivers and trees and wildlife that keep generations of families coming back to Mammoth Lakes, but... but what truly makes us a world-class destination is our community. It's that feeling you get when you see your neighbor at the post office and you ask them how their grandbaby's doing. Our visitors feel that when they come here, too. It can't be bought or advertised or replicated, no matter how much money you have. It's you and your fellow business owners who have clawed out a living here because you love it so much. So if I'm elected, I promise to always remember what it is that makes this community special. It's you, your businesses.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Great timekeeping there, Brianna. All right, Cindy, you're up next with question number six. And question number six again is, over the next five years, what infrastructure projects should the town focus on?
I think that we, you know, of course, the parcel, moving the parcel forward is always number one, but that is not the only thing that we have on our plates and what we need to be working on. I am a supporter of the CRC. I think we need the indoor recreation for a year-round for our children and visitors. So I definitely would stand behind that project. I'd like to not see it reduced anymore. I think it needs to be built the way that we all intended for it to be built. To the extent that we're able, I'd like to see the MAC be able to move forward, albeit it might be a smaller facility or a smaller than we envisioned. We tend to have champagne taste on a beer budget. I think we need to continue to work on our trail systems and multi-use paths and continued road maintenance, which includes, you know, fixing potholes and also paving streets.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Heidi, you're up next with question six, which is, over the next five years, what infrastructure project should the town of Mammoth Lakes focus on?
Okay, again, it's going to come back to housing and that parcel. Keep it moving forward. You know, we have responsibilities to our roads. Our winters, our machinery on them are very hard. We have to stay on top of that because they go downhill very quickly. Also, facilities and amenities. We want a special event center, a place for arts, a place for arts and craft shows, you know, a performing arts. We want a new ice rink, but can we afford it all? That means working with what we've got because we can afford the new bright and shiny, then let's give them the best facelift we can and move on to another project and keep moving forward.
Great, thank you, Heidi. Bill, finally, with question number six. Over the next five years, what infrastructure project should the town of Mammoth Lakes focus on?
You know, I have an answer all written up here, but I'm going to start by saying, at this point, we have to be incredibly careful moving forward on a five-year plan because we just don't know what COVID and the economy is going to toss towards us. So a lot of this is up in the air as to what we're going to be able to afford and not. But now I'll continue with what my answer was. Some of the things already on our plate that we're looking at would be the CRC, primarily funded out of Measure R, the MAC or perhaps a revised MAC, the rehab of the town's multi-use paths, which were already underway, which is LTC funding. Airport capital program is approved and funded through the FAA. We need to replace the underground fuel tanks to Town Yard. This is something that's been on the books for a long time. It's well past due. Any sidewalk project, such as finishing the ones on Main Street, are hugely important. Road rehab and rebuilds need to continue. Wayfinding signage, Phase II, Old Mammoth Road beautification project, trails, parks, I could go on forever on what we can and can't do, but those are some of them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. And congratulations to all four of our candidates. We've made it through all six questions, so well done, everybody. Thank you very much. So next up, and we're right about, we're right on time. Believe it or not, it's already 12:45, so we've got about 15 minutes left in our program today. Next up was a 90-second rebuttal available to each of our candidates. And in this 90 seconds, you are allowed to potentially wrap up or maybe follow up on something that you've said previous. And you certainly have this opportunity to rebut or ask a question of one of your fellow candidates in this 90 seconds. Should you ask a question of a candidate that is direct, that candidate will then have a minute to answer that. We will go in our opening order, which will be Cindy will be first, followed by Sarah, then Bill, and then Heidi. And then, once we get through this section, we're going to turn it over to Ken, who I'm assuming, we've got a few questions, Ken, it looks like I saw on the chat.
Actually, we're just, we're putting in the six questions that we had, so everybody could see that. But we do have some, if any of you out there are listening, please, you know, we've got over 50 people on this. If you have a question, please put it in the chat room. We would appreciate it, and I will try to consolidate, make sure we're asking the same questions at one time instead of 35 different times. So if you have a question, please put it in the chat room, and we'll try to get to it after the rebuttals are done.
Excellent, thank you, Ken. Okay, so rebuttal time then, again, 90 seconds, candidates. Cindy, you are up first.
I'm pretty much going to give my time to the others. I don't have any rebuttals. I think everybody had great answers, and I really appreciate listening to everybody's ideas. And I think this is going to be a great election, and whoever gets elected, I think will have a great team.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Sarah, you're up with 90 seconds once again.
Yeah, I've got to be honest. It's wonderful to have such a, like such a great group of people running, and I would really like to hear from the potential constituents. So unless any of the other council, potential council members have a question for me, I'm happy to turn my time over to the people listening on the call.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Bill, you're next up with 90 seconds.
No, I'm not going to use it. I'll just start coughing.
Fantastic, thank you, Bill. Heidi, would you like to offer anything in your 90 seconds?
Not really, except that thank you for having us all. And, you know, there are some, there's a lot of things going on around us that someone can distract us from what really needs to be done, but I think that we are moving forward. We need to continue moving forward. And the support of the community and, you know, from everyone is really good, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Heidi. Okay, so what we're going to do here again is we're going to, we've got, it is 12:50 right on the nose. We'll reserve two minutes right at the end just to say goodbye and wrap this up completely. So we've got about eight minutes then for Ken to cycle through some questions. Again, if you want to add a last-minute question, please do address it to a specific candidate versus making it a general question. So with that, Ken, I'm going to give you the floor.
The only thing that was one of, what, does the Town Council have a role in addressing climate change given our fires and potential lack of snow?
So we were going to direct a question to a specific person. I'm not sure. Not sure if that was done.
Do we want to go ahead and just give each candidate a quick shot at that one then, Ken?
Just give everybody maybe 30 seconds to a minute.
Perfect. Why don't we start with Cindy then? So Cindy, can you want to repeat the question for us?
Yes. Does the Town Council have a role in addressing climate change given our fires, potential lack of snow?
I don't know what kind of role that the Town Council would necessarily have in affecting climate change. Of course, we do have the responsibility of communicating with the public and making sure that public safety is addressed and communicating what the issues are currently with the creek fire. I think that everyone's doing a really good job, Stu, getting information out and having information available for the public, I think, has been good.
Great, thank you. And I'm just going to jump in here real quick. Obviously, some folks have probably seen some really obscene language added into our chat. I don't know if we've been hacked into or someone finds this funny in any way. I'm pretty sure I speak for the entire group here. It's disgusting. So whoever you are, we would really ask that you stop this. This is a serious matter with serious people looking at the future of our town, and none of this has any place. So we'll just ignore these folks because I think that's exactly what they're looking for, is attention. Sorry about that, Sarah, to say that right ahead of you. But Sarah, same question on what role, to summarize it, is, Brianna, it looks like we've got a video popping up there, too, if there's a way to close that down.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot. I'm trying to get to it fast enough, sorry. I just disabled.
The joys of modern life, right?
Sarah, what role does the Town Council have potentially in climate?
You know, I think, and I said this before, all politics is local, so where do we, where do we start? We start here. We start, I would love to see a plastic bottle ban. I feel like we're getting really close to that right before COVID hit. Why on earth are our visitors coming up here stocking up on plastic water bottles and vons when we have the best water in the world? I mean, those of you who know me know I'm super anti-plastic water bottles. So that's, this is where we start this, you know. We are, it's our chance to lead by example and show our visitors how we do things here in the mountains. And that is a great place to start. I mean, that's something huge that I would love to see implemented. We start by working on the Eastern Sierra Sustainable Recreation Partnership. We start by submitting our project ideas and getting excited about creating solutions here from the ground up. And there are so many creative people in this town with so many great ideas. And absolutely, we have a role in this. Again, we have to show people, we have to lead by example. This is, it all flows downhill from here. So let's be good stewards of the land, and let's show everyone else how to act as well.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Bill, same question to you, you know, regarding our climate and what will Town Council might have in there.
I don't believe this particular Town Council can make any decisions that will have any significant changes to environment. That being said, when we do look at things and people came forward with a plastic, proposed plastic bottle ban, we also have to look at the unintended consequences. What does that do for our visitor? You know, there are so many things that go into it. None of these things are simple. While all politics are local, there are no simple solutions for global warming or global climate change. We can, you know, put in less electric-using bulbs. We can do a lot of these little things, but it takes something on a larger scale in the town of Mammoth Lakes to make a difference.
Great, thank you, Bill. And finally, Heidi, on this question, again, climate control or our climate and Town Council's role potentially. Heidi, you're still on mute.
Maybe next time. You know, fire season. I think it's unfortunately going to get worse. Our winters are going to be drier, but then wetter, which creates a vicious cycle for our grasses. Lack of rainfall. We need to work with the community first to protect ourselves because this is only, you know, going to continue. Working on defensible space, getting out there, assisting where we can. A lot of people are a little overwhelmed with the amount of defensible space requirements that need to happen. Second homeowners may not always want to come up and work when they come up here, so reaching out to them and trying to, you know, start there. Climate change, you know, yeah, we can go back to our plastic bag ban, work on the bottles. It's a start from here. It does go out. Those are small things that we use every day. Unfortunately, some people use them more than others. I do not like either of them. Working on reducing, making sure that we have ample recyclable for our guests and community. But like Bill said, climate change is a big one. And, but I think that we could start with those things and keep doing our rain dances and snow dances also.
Great, thank you, Heidi. Ken, Brianna, I think if you agree with me, we're right at 12:58. We wanted to conclude this right at 1 o'clock. So would it be prudent, potentially, that we can gather the rest of the questions that are in there and potentially submit them in a way that the chamber sends them equally to all candidates, and we can post those on the chamber website?
Yeah, we are, you know, I think we will go through and, if there are any questions that haven't been answered right now, it looks like all the ones that were listed have been answered.
There was only one. If we do want to go ahead and do it, I'm not sure if it's worth emailing it out just for one question.
If you want to do that with one-minute answer for that, the, disgusted by what, whoever this person did this here, let's see. Here was the question that was kind of sent for everybody, I guess. If you're opposed to a project or something that the town is doing, but it has already been voted on and approved by the other members of Town Council, how will you handle that?
So why don't we go, and we'll go back in reverse order on this one, starting with Heidi, and maybe just take a quick 15 or 20 seconds on this one. Heidi, go ahead.
Okay, you know what? The people have spoken, and you've got to get behind it. You need to support it and move it forward and stay, you know, you have to at times remove yourself and your personal thoughts from decisions being made because, as a council member, you are representing a large community or a community, and you can't throw a tantrum.
Great, thank you, Heidi. Bill, you'd be up next, same question.
You would think that Heidi has already gone to Council Member 101A. The answer is yes. Once the council has voted on something, even if you are the opposing vote, it is your job to get behind the direction of the council.
Great, thank you, Bill. Sarah, same question to you.
Yeah, I think I said in the candidate form that Mammoth Voices held, you know. How do you, it's one thing to govern when, I mean, what does it take to win Town Council? 600 votes, 700 votes? So if you think about the amount of people that may or may not have voted for you, you're not necessarily having been voted into office by the majority of the town. But yes, you know, it's very rare, I've seen in our Town Council or really in government, that you're voting, you know, three to two. I think our Town Council has been incredible with all coming together and, excuse me, and everyone getting behind that idea. So yes, of course.
Thank you, Sarah. And then Cindy, same question to you.
You're the opposing vote. You still need to get on board with the project so that it moves forward because you are only one vote, and the council as a whole makes a decision, and that decision needs to move forward with everybody on board.
Great, thank you, Cindy. All right, with that, we are just past 1 o'clock. Sorry for going a little bit late. And again, apologies to everybody for the foolishness of somebody getting into our chat room like that. Brianna, thank you for tackling that issue and stopping it as quickly as you did. That said, I want to thank again our candidates, Cindy, Sarah, Bill, and Heidi for spending an hour with us. On behalf of Ken Brangle, Brianna Goico, Curtis, and all of the board members and myself, thank you very much for spending this hour with us and discussing the issues. I think it's clear to us and to all that voting is certainly a right. I think it's clear to us and to all that voting is, is, is certainly a right, but it's one that you need to exercise. So we do hope that everyone that's listening here and wasn't able to participate will get out and vote. Ken, Brianna, anything that you want to wrap up with?
Just real quick, we're doing, we moved the PPE distribution to Thursday mornings because we seem to be, we seem to have packed our Tuesdays, and we finally realized maybe we ought to move the PPE distribution. It will be Thursday morning, 10:00 to noon here at the visitor center parking lot. We're getting, picking up the PPE today and have it available. Hopefully have the surgical mask. We have some face shields, some N95s. We need, we're going to pick up some more hand sanitizer and hopefully some gloves. So all those will be available for the members, the business community, come by and pick those up between 10:00 and noon on Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Brianna, anything that you need to add? Awesome. Then, folks, with that, thanks for spending an hour with us, a little bit over an hour. We really appreciate it. Candidates, thank you one and all. We really appreciate your time, and we wish you the very best of luck on your election. And thank you again. We'll be back with the chamber programming again soon. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.